Alright everyone, it is 6:51 and this meeting is called to order. So first off, thanks everyone for taking time out of your schedules to come to a special council meeting. I'll just start with a couple of excuses, which are only required for executives, so Isaiah and Eduardo couldn't be here today. Eduardo is actually in the other room at the high of the meeting.
And Maliz.
Oh, and Maliz, sorry. If anyone wants to move for their excuse, Hannah?
I have motion two.
Okay, do we have a second? Marin, is there any opposition to excusing Isaiah, Eduardo, and Maliz?
Chris, can you guys sit on the other side?
So that carries?
I'll back that.
So we're here for the referendum question to increase fee levy, presentation, and motion. So at this point, I'll hand the floor over to the presenters who are here and the PowerPoint committee find found in the Facebook group. Is everything okay for?
Uh, yes.
So if you guys can pull up the PowerPoint on the Facebook group, there are some hyperlinks we'll ask you to click when we get there. So as you know, I'm the internal coordinator and manage and coordinate all the clubs. And these are all members of the Clubs and Spaces Committee, who've been dealing with the struggle from the beginning of the semester with me.
So we came today to propose this motion. Do you agree to increase the existing 30 cents fee levy of the non-academic clubs by eight cents per credit to a total of 38 cents per credit effective winter 2020? So you guys may be wondering why we have proposed this referendum at this time. It's because we're going through a lot of financial difficulties and these are the scars that we have inherited from several issues that have been happening for the past two years. If you go on the first slide, you'll see a table. When you see on the year 2017 to 2018, we have a deficit of $78,000. This is because of two reasons. So in 2017, Clubs and Spaces was touching way too much money. We had a surplus of $87,000. We would touch a lot of money from school and the executive team at the time has decided to decrease the fee levy of the Clubs and Spaces by six cents. So when they did that, they expected to have a surplus the following year. It did not happen because during that same year, the university has cut us $103,000 because they figured out we had a surplus too. So yeah, so we were hit by a deficit of $78,000 because of that. The following year, when the new exec team came up, they tried to do a budget balancing in order to solve the deficit. So as you can see on the other slide, for the fiscal year 2018, 2019, on the section for non-academic clubs, the fee levy has increased from 20 cents to 30 cents. And that was internal restructuring of the budget of the CSU, so the students were not charged more money for the changes. That still did not save us. We ended up spending more money than we have budgeted for and that is because of financial mismanagement.
In such dramatic effect, guys, which would have worked if we had a presentation.
Exactly. So the financial mismanagement has led us to have $28,000 more deficit during that year. Many mistakes were made. There was no cross-referencing with income and the club's budgets. When we were signing checks, we were hit by a wave of retroactive reimbursements regardless of our restrictions. Clubs were not aware of their remaining budget for the rest of the year. The clubs did not sign a contract. The contract wasn't written and wasn't enacted. There were no rules to bind them into how they were supposed to spend their money. And also, the committee was working on precedent rather than, you know, the bylaw and the standing regulations. So this led us to the situation we have been, we are in this year and we have taken measures in order to solve all these issues. Marin is going to present to you the work we have done this year.
So some of the consequences we faced, well, one of the biggest ones, we had a smaller budget. Although our fee levy increased from last year, we had a smaller budget because if you click on the hyperlink "Smaller Budgets", you'll see that in last year's budget, external funding was accounted for. However, external funding is not for sure, right? It's money that we hope that clubs raise, but we're not sure and we can't really budget it in. And then you'll also see that although they had an allocated budget of 200, they budgeted $257,000. If you scroll all the way to the bottom, they allocated 269. So that's more than what they even had. And in addition to that, some of the issues that happened were we're not checking how much money we had left before allocating. So we just spent money, but we didn't double check to see if we even had that money when we allocated it. And they tried, last year, a solution was proposed to take off the budget. However, it still left us in a deficit of 103,000, uh, sorry, 90,000 were the actuals. So some of the measures we've taken this year to ensure that we prevent another situation of a deficit and financial mismanagement, along with my committee, myself, and the club director, Noah. So right now, clubs, when they submit budgets, it's a detailed budget proposal. Whenever a club submits a check, I'll always cross-reference their budget sheet, how much they have left, and what they actually requested in their budget sheet. So if you click on the hyperlink "Cross- referencing checks", you'll see this is, this is a live budget from one of the clubs. I believe, sorry, this is all the budgets from the clubs. Maybe I shouldn't have. Okay, so if you click like an example Syrian Students' Associations, you'll see right now they have, they see exactly how much they spent. So they had a budget of $3,800 and they spent $387 so far. And if you click on the second slide on the bottom, it says "approved event breakdown", unfortunately, it will come out of your club budget for this year. Because we did, in the month of May and June, we had a lot of clubs who spent money that wasn't approved, but we had to pay for it because it was last year. And last year, in like, they had like a whole bunch of like paper trails of them saying they would pay for it. So transparency also, if you click on that Google Doc, that's a Google Doc that I share with my committee, has all the tea of anything clubs. Like, it has like, it even has a document for our referendum proposal today, like everything's in there. Noah writes us notes to the committee, it's all in there. And the club's contract. So the club's contract is in the standing regulations, but it wasn't implemented for the past four years. But then when reading it, I found something, I found a binder from the internal coordinator of five years ago that left me all the gold.
Shake.
Yeah, she was Desiree's friend and came to visit once, so it was really nice. And she left me like golden, like everything. She left me a contract, a work plan, like everything I could ever need to have a good year. And it was like awesome. I think that's it for this slide. So what our new budget will look like? So we're proposing, if this referendum passes, we should get about $28,000 in the winter semester. And we're hoping to put $10,000 into the pool of budget approvals for fall because we still have clubs that are sending in budget approvals that we haven't given them yet. And we're hoping to put 18, an additional 18,000 in special club funding because we've had so many cuts to clubs that already got their budget. We do want to fulfill the need that they were missing because they do want, they are really working hard. I can attest to clubs working really, really hard to fill the empty financial space because like Amma and Salan saw, my safe is like full of cash, probably shouldn't say that. But there's been a lot of fundraising, a lot of ticket sales, a lot of, a lot of work on their part to financially like survive the year. And we, I also added 1,000 in the, okay, you didn't add it. Okay, so. Yes, I already mentioned this, I believe. But, but. Sorry, we tried to make it really funny, but the projection's not working. We have no more money.
Yes. For the ones like, we have member at large, so my name is Salan Sayid. I'm a Kina Cody counselor and represents Kina Cody School of Engineering and Technology. Also a member of this vehicle committee, like, you know, we, we work with Club and Spaces. That being said, like, if you can go to the next slide of how we came up with this amount, how we came up with this 0.8 cents. So looking at the previous years, as my colleague mentioned, of 2,000 and, not 2,000, like 215,000, like 215,000 dollars was there for last year, clubs, which were like under 100 clubs. We had, registered under 100 registered clubs. But this year, we have like more than 120, like, we have 120 registered clubs and we have more coming in. And I can vouch on that because we have club applications every Club and Space Committee meeting. So we have, we having new clubs coming in and we have, we already have 120. But how much were allocated to us was 160K. So we tried our best in the past, since the beginning of this year, to allocate like very precisely how my colleague mentioned. But looking at the last year, like 215,000 dollars and 160K, what was the difference that we found was $55,000. So $55,000 was the one that were used more than this year, last year. So looking at that number, since I was a Kina Cody student, you know, just doing the maths all over. So we got the, we got the number of $59,000 by the calculation of bringing eight cents increment on the club and non-academic clubs. If you guys can go to the next slide, if you can see like 0.8 cents will bring, if you just prove 31,000 students, so we are coming up to $59,520. Stating that like if this referendum go through, we're gonna have $28,260 coming winter 2020. So as Marin mentioned, the, we're gonna have this amount, but how we gonna use it? If you can scroll to the next slide, we are using it very like, we already planned how we use it. We are putting 17,500 exactly to a special club funding that will make special club funding to 27,500. Why we are giving bigger portion over here? Because as we mentioned, we were a striking pass towards the club, giving their regular club funding. Now we go easy on clubs events because special club funding is specifically for the events, not the whole budget proposal. We are, we are putting 10K towards, towards our regular club funding that will bring up to 15K because we already have a 5K from the 165. In the end, we are putting $760 to a club culture fair that will bring up to 2,760. It's mine, maybe Marin wants to, like, and we all want to, that's not Marin, but the committee wants to do like a good culture fair. So we are putting 760 dollars over there. That being said, this amount is not just like, we are not just coming here and asking students for an increment of 0.8 cents and getting the money. But we are here with some plan, with some resolutions and with like how this money gonna use and what are, will be the consequences and what will be the financial management thing. And for that, I would request my colleague, Maha, to talk on that.
Thank you. I don't think I need to convince anybody in this room the importance of participating in a club or the benefits of what it can do to a student's life here on campus or how it can enrich us. Oftentimes, clubs is how students either find a sense of belonging somewhere outside of home. It's how you make your experience at university go just beyond just a classroom. So in order for us, the Clubs and Spaces Committee, to fully carry out our mandate and to actually provide these clubs and, sorry, the resources and the necessary assistance that they need, we're not simply asking for more funds. I believe that every single person here and also the students are gonna realize why this referendum question is being asked and that it is for their own good. But what is to say, what is there in place to prevent us from being in this very exact same spot a few years from now? We can ask for more money, but in order to make sure that we have no more financial mismanagement, no more financial misconduct, that's where policies can be placed. So we have to make sure that A, one, funds are gonna be properly allocated by the Clubs and Spaces Committee. But also B, that once those funds are allocated by those clubs, when they give us a budget proposal and when we approve them and we go through everything, that they submit a post-mortem report detailing exactly what the funds that we allocated were used for. So in September, policy, on September 16th, Policy Committee has met. It was the first Policy Committee meeting. And in that meeting, we went over the policy on clubs. So this is, if you look to Article 4.2.4, it reiterates, "Submit a post-mortem report at the end of the academic year detailing the expense list, how the budget was used, and the overall report on the club's activities and events during the course of the year." This is to be submitted at the end of each academic year and failure to do so may result in either not getting a budget for the next year. It will definitely impact them, not being able to attend the club's gala, not being able to have any reference letters, and not to mention, a violation of the signed club's contract can also ensure inappropriate legal actions. So this is why we are here in front of you today, to make sure that this motion passes. Whereas Clubs and Spaces has, have a budget of $200,024 this year, whereas Club Spaces has a $1,505 deficit this year, whereas we are no longer able to find our students. We're in October and we ran out of money, guys. This is, this is not looking good. So, "To promote the educational, political, social, recreational, and cultural interests of its members, the CSU endeavors to consider and support activities which will enhance the quality of life for students at Concordia University." So be it resolved that Concordia approves the following referendum question. "Do you agree to increase the fee levy of the non-academic clubs by eight cents per credit to a total of 38 cents per credit for effective winter 2020?"
Do we have a second for the motion? That's right.
Thank you so much and we are open to all and any of your questions.
Any questions, any concerns that number at large or council have, you can ask them.
Can you start a speakers list if anyone wants to speak to it? Oh, yeah, so listen.
So in the long run, is this going to fix the club's deficit?
Yes, so, so the way we already planned the budget this year, we do not have the deficit anymore. The deficit that is present here was because of some spending that we have done during the semesters. It wasn't really such a big gap after all. So yes, this fund will help us close the gap that we had between this year and last year because we already gave a certain amount to clubs last year and many clubs were very successful with that. But this year, when we were taking the applications, we got this one club that asked for $8,000 and we had to give them $500. And we, and that was our previous meeting. And during that meeting, we had six club applications. We all gave them $500 regardless of the amount they asked for. And we had to take $3,000 from next semester's budget to use it for that one meeting. And we couldn't even satisfy most of our clubs because we didn't have any more funds. So this increase will help us go through, I mean, finish the year. Clubs will be able to run normally and, you know, have more funds for the following years. And we're going to back the amount with policies that we are actually working on right now to have a more sustainable, long-term, responsible, and transparent way of spending.
In addition to that, some way we try to make it sustainable solution for us is we look at the numbers from last year. Like initially, the goal was to increase it to five cents, but then when calculating the numbers, it looked eight cents was a more feasible solution. We looked at the numbers from last year, how much they spent and how much they allocated as opposed to how much they were budgeting. And this number is similar to that in that we can afford to fund all our clubs the way we want to and it should survive, it should be fine for the next five years according to our calculations.
Cool, thank you. Sorry, what's your name?
Alex.
Alex, go ahead.
I'm just wondering, a bit of a two-pronged question. First, is this a fee levy that students can opt out of?
No.
No.
Just for this year.
This is, so like this five, 0.8 cents increase will be on the CSU fee levy. So CSU have 4.95 of fee levy out of this, 0.30 is for non-academic clubs. So this fee levy will increase 4.95 to 5.03 and which will give eight cents towards a non-academic that will bring it to 0.0, 0.38.
And your fault?
Yeah, just to be clear, I guess, for that. So can't opt out of this specific one as part of the bigger CSU one? You can't opt out of the CSU one?
No, this is a CSU fee levy, this is like.
Thank you. Esther?
Yeah, so this would be for winter 2020, but will it, would you come back to .30 next year? Or would it just be, this is a permanent, this would be a permanent .38?
This is going to be a permanent.
So like, we came up with this number because we, because clubs were in deficit and clubs wanted more allocation towards the student-run clubs. So we were putting this not just for this year, not just for winter 2020, but as a permanent solution. And since like in the end of the day, when this will come towards CSU fee levy, if you see any changes and we all, we can always relocate that was done in past. The past, like the clubs were like 20 cents and it became 30 cents, it was 25 cents. So like, we can relocate in future, but this is the thing that we propose, we are proposing it to be a permanent solution.
Just to follow up on this question. As we've presented at the beginning of the presentation, the previous years, there has been a lot of switches of fee levies. And, you know, it didn't, it didn't really ultimately solve the problem because a big portion of our money was coming from the university. And suddenly, we were cut and, you know, all that fund was gone. Every year, we're having more and more clubs. Like this year, we've had the highest number of clubs in CSU history and every meeting, we're having more and more and more club applications, new clubs that we have fun and take care of. So yeah, that's, that's not just for this year, but for the following years.
Thank you.
Yes.
Desert?
Yeah, it's pretty organic, that's, we're gonna speak on that, how in the past, it was 30 cents. Like, the highest it been in the last few years was 2014. It was 30 cents and then it went down. And now you're back at 30 cents. But back in the day, I, the clubs were, I heard around 50 clubs. And now that you're at the highest number now, it is a lot of strain on your committee and the students too at that point because they just don't have enough funds to go forward. It's a.
And as a result, we get a lot of issues.
Yeah, and that's, just speak on that too, you know, the appeals that you, I know you guys are going through because if they're giving $500 and finally they had a budget of 4K, it is a shitty situation. Sticky situation, so it's just this, hopefully also you can really install a new policy that stays for a very long time, just so that the mistakes that were done in the past don't repeat themselves and the 38 cents can be a sustainable solution for at least.
Thank you.
Adding to that, like, these clubs which we are catering, it's not just like culture or academic clubs. We are also catering like sports club, like tennis, we have like, we have a lot of, we, we, we go like vast, like we go, we welcome all the clubs, not just like which are, even the smaller amount, like we cater them.
Thank you.
Put in the minutes.
Chris?
Yeah, so the first thing is, I'm not here to tell anybody how to vote and also, I'm not saying I'm poor against this motion, but I do just want to voice some concerns. And I think some people here might even agree, maybe it's out of our control, et cetera, et cetera. So don't take any of this the wrong way. But there are some things that I think need to be said. The first is, we're adding this question mid-election, which is bad practice. You could consider it an emergency, something you could do. It's not against any rule. Actually, it is, we have to, I think we have to not withstand a section of standing regulations.
The one about the CEO posting, the announcement for the wording of the?
I think there might be others. We should quickly double check that.
There's nothing about deadlines, I've checked and rechecked.
We also spoke to CEO Florian himself and there was no deadline for referendum question. There is a deadline for a council getting into the elections, but there is no deadline for a referendum.
No, it's not a deadline, it's, it's, it says, I don't know if this applies to CSU fee levies, but it says that it needs to be sent to policy committee.
That's, yeah, that's non-CSU.
That's a non-CSU and this is CSU itself.
Does it actually differentiate though?
Yeah, it is any non-CSU club, like your revenue.
Okay, so that's addressed.
Standing regulation through fact setting.
Then fair on that one, that's addressed. Yeah, I thought I saw it like that, but where I thought I remembered that. But regardless, you can, there is emergency, added in election, there's no rule against it. But I would like to stress it's bad practice and should be avoided. Another thing, should be avoided if you're able to. Another thing is, and it's really unfortunate that the situation that you're in, I see a committee that wants to do great work, that wants to give clubs the ability to succeed and you're put in a crappy situation where you can't, you know, you want to be able to do it, but you can't and you're stretched for resources. And also, we're not exactly the most, we're not the most organized as a CSU. And I don't think that's any of our faults because we're not experts, none of us, none of us are experts. Even JMSB students, they can study business, they haven't gone to a real business, they haven't ran a real business yet, most of them. So they don't have experience with that. And it sucks that we're all thrown in June 1st and it's like, create a budget in two weeks and, you know, like, plan for a whole year with, never having done this before. I think this speaks to how we need stronger policies. And I don't even think the financial policies, I don't even think we should be writing these. I think we should be getting professionals to write those, just so we have good practices and things like this never happen again.
Sorry, I have to cut you off, it's two minutes.
Yeah, perfect.
Do you want to go back on the speakers list?
Sure.
Okay, Esther?
I was just wondering how many clubs there are.
What?
This year.
So that's the thing, we have approved like one around.
New clubs or old ones?
New clubs.
Well, how many, like, coming back, like, current, how many come back and how many new clubs are there?
Like, exactly, it's about 160, but we have new ones that didn't just, didn't register yet. Like, last year was 120.
Okay, and how many are you expecting for winter?
Not expecting any upcoming, like, we can expect like new applications coming in for new clubs. We still have like, I think so five in our list to approve. If I'm not wrong, seeing the, our last meeting because we cut that out.
It's an urgent meeting, so we can get to it.
So we, we have, we're gonna have applications. We don't know how many applications is gonna come out because it's again, up to students coming up, want to create a new club. But the ones that are already registered, 120 as Marin said, and as like 160 out of that, like, they are not registered. Like, I can, I know some clubs who are not registered yet. So being an active club, you have to register yourself with a bunch of access.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
Oh yeah, so Amma, you were saying that at some point, the university caught like $103,000 with the funding. I was just wondering how much funding we get from the university now and like what the likelihood of that staying or?
You have nothing?
We get nothing now. We got nothing.
That was, if they realized that they over-allocated that money.
But that's totally like they saw the fee levy decrease. But the thing is, was that fee levy decrease was taking into account the money that we were receiving from the university. So there was no point, so afterwards, we were hit double hard. And so in the graph also, like, we showed the projection where we went from minus 6K deficit that first year to minus almost 80K the next. And that's what we've been like writing off the tailcoats of and that's what we're trying to.
Minus 78.
Almost 80K.
The next year.
Okay, gotcha. So like, do you see, because you're talking about how there's more clubs. I just want to know, do you just see kind of the need for this fee levy to continually rise in the future to accommodate all the club applications we get? Or do you think there should be a system in place where we don't necessarily approve or allocate the amount of money for each club that they necessarily want?
I, I don't, I think so.
Well said.
Maha mentioned like how we, in the resolution, like, we are not just gonna, we are not just proposing this amount for increasing our money, but like we are gonna put things in policy that's gonna show, like, that's gonna keep clubs accountable on when we have to, when they have to send the budget proposal. We're gonna work on making like tier lists, like, and that is what we're gonna work on because now, right now, we are proposing the ideas, but this is gonna be done by the committee on making the, taking the steps, taking the steps for how we can just ask clubs to come like early as possible. We're gonna give the deadline, we're gonna give the tier system as I mentioned. So yeah, we, we're gonna take precaution, we're gonna take like financial management thing on this case, but yeah.
I feel like I mean more in the sense of the growing amount of clubs that there are because there are so many undergraduate students and I think Concordia students just love clubs. So I, I mean in more in terms of that because it comes to a certain point where we can't necessarily accommodate all of the clubs that want to form.
Well, that's why we're trying to come up, that's why this increase was calculated specifically to accommodate the rise that we have currently seen. So that's the thing, the fact that within our purview, we've seen a dramatic rise in clubs within our, like.
Mandate.
Mandate, thank you. Like, we have seen at least, like, how many new clubs being formed. But the thing is, is that we need to have an equation here that's proportional because that's the thing, we're still given the same budget for much, like so many less clubs. So then it's not fair for us to have to nitpick. It's not fair for us to not be able to give like fledgling clubs the opportunity and the chance that they need to survive.
You have also to say.
Oh, sorry, I have to cut you off, it's been way more than two minutes, I'm out, sorry guys.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering, for the, as you said, the university had to cut off the, its support, the financial support. Don't you say that this referendum that we're going to, the creating a fee levy to support the clubs will, will, will like remove any opportunity of? Will 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 like remove any uh opportunity of re-discussing this matter with the university itself?
Well, um tha- that's the thing, the university removed the money during that time because they were giving us too much money. So it was pretty much money we didn't need at the time, cause the clubs couldn't spend all of those in their events, that's why they. They actually took it took it out retroactively. Um before uh after we have planned our budget for the year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. So it's um, we are, yeah.
Uh I'll I'll like follow, so what happened was, the the school didn't take away a hundred thousand dollars from us. What happened was, we had a fee levy, so every year the school gives us as much as our fee levy. And then when we decreased the fee levy, they're like, wait a minute, we gave, we were giving them too much. So they realized that they were giving us a hundred thousand dollars more than they were supposed to and that's why they're taking it back, so we really can't fight them on something that was a mistake essentially.
Thank you.
This is not a mistake for like four years, it's, they were supporting the clubs in their way. And then suddenly they stopped giving that amount of money. And my point is like creating a P levy from students' money while giving message to university, to the university that's okay, we can, we can have the money from different sources, we don't need you anymore.
So I understand that uh point of view, but actually, what's gonna end up happening, hopefully, is that the university will realize, cause the thing is, like you have to take everything into context. So the context of back then, by the way, them retroactively removing a hundred and three thousand dollars is technically an illegal move. And we can't technically go and see them, although that would be very expensive.
Yeah.
So, um and like, it'd be like expensive, it'd be a lot of, like a like a huge like time and resources management thing. So, that's the thing, no, actually, we can work in tandem with the with the administration. If the administration sees that whereas before, there were only about sixty-something clubs, and now that that has doubled. And now that we are asking for more money for the students because for them to fund themselves, they will definitely want to support these initiatives. Also, a lot of these clubs um have also seeked out sponsorships with the dean of students. We have, we have been referring them to external sponsors, we have been referring them everywhere we possibly can for funding. Like, oh, there's this uh committee that grants this much amount for for these kind of events. Like we have been trying so hard to find every type of alternative source because we don't have the funds to sustain these groups and these clubs and the work that they do. So the administration.
Like.
Uh thank you, sorry, I have to cut you off, it's been uh three minutes, uh Chris or.
I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, so yeah, just see what I was saying before, really short, we need better financial policy, that's it.
Alright, thank you, uh Hannah?
Um yeah, I wanted to bring up the point that you're going, like I I really like the idea of having this clear policy on what clubs have to do, but at the same time, I just want to know like. First off, how are you going to like make sure that clubs actually follow all this? And second, that's putting a, I just wanted to bring up the point that it is putting a lot of strain on people running a club. Um while it is really important, it's just how are you going to make sure that clubs are able, like know about the, know what exactly they have to do here? Like for example, if it's first-year students who've never done a budget before, who aren't in business or anything and have no idea how to do that.
Yeah. Um.
So are you referring to the the motion of the the policy committee one?
Yes, okay.
Not, and since I love that.
Yeah, the the measures you want to have, uh for, yeah, on that side.
Okay, so that's the thing, that's perfectly understandable that you're saying that this is gonna create a lot of strain, but. That's the thing, being in a club is a very valuable experience, where where, like whether it's for the executives that have their first experience in management and in a leadership position. Or whether it's for the students and the people who are, who take part of it, but that's the thing, when you are asking. When we at first ask you, you have to first of all, sign a club's contract, so that was never enforced before. And now this will be, and in that contract, it will stipulate that um all of the above-mentioned criteria, so that A, you have to respect the CSU code of conduct at all times. Uh you have to follow the club's policy and afterwards also submit a postmortem report. Now, your concern being that that's gonna be too much work already, they have to put in a budget proposal. So when they put in a budget proposal saying that we need this amount for this event, so if we grant them that amount for that event, all we're asking at the end of the year is for accountability and transparency. This is students' money that we are taking for, this is not something, hopefully, that any club can just abuse and buy like a Playstation for their office while labeling it. That this is an expense, a miscellaneous expense for the club, but it gets only the board of directors, just to avoid any type of misconduct. Having it on paper, making them sign it and then understanding that us granting them money, us giving them that responsibility comes with. Um it comes with responsibility, it comes with accountability and they need to make good on that, so submitting, submitting a postmortem report will actually only increase workload for the club's director at the end of the year. Cause he's the one, because at the end of the academic, we're we're gonna review it all and based on those postmortem reports, that is afterwards where we're gonna do the projections for the next year.
Um yeah, I.
Did you have all of them?
Yeah, yeah, because I was mostly like, are you going to provide support if people haven't written a postmortem before, are you going to help them write?
Oh yes, I'm good.
That's that's what I meant, I didn't mean like, I I I love the concept in general, having that accountability, but just have a help.
A little bit of innovation.
So right now, as as you know, we had like almost twenty new clubs registered this year. They have to write a constitution, they have to do a petition and they have to write a cover letter. We sit down with them for like an hour, two hours, we go through everything. They don't know how to use my events, we go through it all. If they didn't come to the training, which really sucks, cause not everyone came, we had like Count Noah especially, like he, like club's director, he was really working hard. On making sure that all the club executives are educated on how to run their club.
Thank you.
But we will also do another one, just because a lot of people missed it. So we we do provide, we try our best to provide all of the clubs, cause we have too many for us to to manage and to handle, we were meeting almost like bi-weekly, it was, it was getting insane. Like, um just just the workload and the hours, but that's the thing, so we provide them with all the tools. Maren came up with this amazing workshop, I'm so proud of it because it helped so many clubs, but not just other clubs, like how to, how to, how to make a budget. How to go out there and secure external sponsorships and granting, how to A, like we were offering, if ever they wanna do like an event on campus. We were like giving them the licenses to SafeServe and uh their consent training licenses and all of these different tools that are so beneficial, not just for clubs, but just in general. And so we're gonna be doing another one, definitely.
Uh Shabani, you have a question?
Hi, so you said in twenty fourteen, there were fifty clubs? For some sort of.
Sorry, no, I.
Desiree mentioned.
Okay, yeah, no, because fifty in twenty fourteen to like a hundred plus now is like a pretty drastic increase, I know you're doing more of a stricter policy thing, but. Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there any reason why that number like doubled in the past few years?
I think so.
Do you want to ask?
Yeah, yeah, the number, I'm gonna say that's from the club's director. So I don't, yeah.
Well, I can, I'll tell you.
Like me being here since twenty fourteen, I can say like, because of the student interest, like uh, uh like students are coming up and in past, like.
Yeah. Students, oh.
Alex, I'm a hair, like since twenty fourteen, so I can say, I can mention that, students were not like actively coming towards uh. Uh CSU, like Concordia Saint Union to make their club, they were doing it, but they were not like really active and they were not on the list of the union. So like, by that time after twenty fourteen, people get educated on this and they are registering themselves and they are getting onto the list of CSU, so yeah.
Thank you. Uh Patrick, did you still want to ask?
Uh yeah, I just had a question, is is there anything saying that like, like is there any rule, like would you consider putting like a cap? On, like I'm not saying like something low, but would you consider putting a cap on like how much you can give out to each club? Because I don't think there's anything on there, like would you consider that too?
Well, yeah, like I feel like we're already gonna review the club's policy, as you know, with you and your committee, so like. It it's, we're, it's all gonna be reviewed and um someone mentioned earlier, a tier system. Um so we're gonna be looking into that, but it really depends on what we, the com- policy committee also decides.
Yeah, putting on the cap, we can do like in the beginning of the year, if we see like, that just for example, if we, next year, we are get, we are having a amount of two sixty K. Budget allocation to hundred and sixty clubs, so we're gonna start like in the beginning of the year with the with financial uh financial coordinator and development coordinator. Like we should work on like how there should be a cap on each club, because next year, if we are, if we are at two sixty K for the year. And again, we shouldn't be uh like coming back, we should cap on the amount of uh we're gonna give to each club, yeah, we can take into consideration that.
Uh Aman?
Uh can I move to call the question?
Uh yeah, okay, we have a second. Uh Desiree, is there any opposition to calling a question? Okay, um so in that case, we.
Uh, pardon permission, can uh, because we are also counselors, can we vote on this as a?
Probably not, it's a conflict of interest, no?
Uh it's. It doesn't benefit you.
We're presenting?
No, the money is directly back to the students.
Yeah. Benefiting back as the.
So it is a conflict of interest.
Sorry?
It's a conflict of interest.
There is none, because this is not, this is not a school.
It's how they.
I mean, it's it's actually council who decides, so I guess we can move to a vote, following the.
Like as a counselor, I'm asking like if it's.
The news. Yeah, fo- following the new policies, it's council who decides, did you have a question?
I'm I'm. And.
Yeah, fair enough. Yeah, just if the conflict of interest would come because you're the counselors presenting the motion, but then every time a counselor presents a motion, would they have to rescind?
Yeah, they have to rescind them too, so like, like, yeah, like if the counselor is writing a motion in the in in the regular council meeting, that's what I meant, like.
Right, the motion, yeah.
Yeah, it's 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 not, it's a, like it's a third question.
Okay, yeah.
Well, I think that, okay, so I know that we're presenting, but I do believe that any counselor, whenever they come up, they can absolutely support a project and speak to it.
It's not our.
And present it, but in that case, obviously, you already know what their vote will be, so I do believe that in sake of transparency, uh they should present their vote. And just for everyone to, like whoever's presenting upfront should not vote on the matter.
But like, i- in this case, like every time in 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 council, if a counselor is bringing a motion, he would have to rescind, like it's his motion he's bringing, he has to put his vote on it, like. Just saying, like just putting into the minutes, like if me, as a counselor, I'm bringing a motion to a table. Uh I need like, I'm bringing that motion because I think like it's my motion and I have to vote on this.
The the, the problem is that if the the three individuals presenting don't vote, we don't have forum for the vote.
That is, and we don't even have a forum, then.
So, but also, um. Sorry, this is, this, the the code of conduct is new and I'm trying to navigate it as much as you are.
Exactly, because being a.
So they're often doing this because they're they're aware of this issue and they're not the, doing it for their own pocket, right? Like, it's pretty obvious, right?
I mean, it's still a financial benefit.
I know, we have a.
It's all the committee, it's all the committee.
Yeah, it's, no, I I I don't think it's a conflict of control, I just.
Is is everyone, is everyone okay to break the issue?
Like, yeah.
That was being up the issue.
If if you believe it's a conflict of interest, you may abstain, if not, you may vote. Um the the vote doesn't directly benefit the individuals, so.
Yeah, just just wanted to put into the in into the minutes, because it's not benefiting us, it's it's benefiting the students and students who made.
I know.
Okay, alright, alright.
No, because because I don't.
You're investing too much, this is weird.
Okay, folks, so, okay, we'll move to a vote, um so, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands.
Check size.
Six, all those opposed? One, and any abstentions. Alright, so in that case, the motion carries, um and that's it.
Thank you so much.
Can I move to adjourn?
Uh yeah, well, just thank you all for coming, then, and uh yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you so much for taking the time.
Thank you. That's a lot, thank you so much.
Oh, Patrick cares.
Guys, a lot of work.
I have a couple things, so um, first thing is Isaiah asked me to just tell you all that uh we're presenting a brief to the um.
So there is a si- a consultation on systemic racism at the city of Montreal, so we will be presenting a brief along with our uh L I C manager, Walter. Uh so Isaiah is doing that on Monday, uh we will be hopefully sending out a statement in the next few days about the P E Q changes, I don't know if you all know about that. Uh and I'm I'm thinking of bringing us like a a motion about it to the next regular council meeting, so I just wanted to give you all a heads up on that, so.
And we, we're thinking about.
Uh a statement against the P E Q changes, but yeah.
We're we we might be doing a general assembly to to also discuss on a motion with the students on how to address this and what to do.
Maren and I are currently talking about that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there's a lot of stuff on the table.
Okay, thank you.
But I don't know if I should.
Okay, so Hannah moved to adjourn, do you have a second, someone, is there any opposition? Alright, so meeting adjourned, thanks.
Woo, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, guys.
Yeah.